Call this meeting to order, Mary, roll please.
Archer.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Howard.
Here.
Redlin.
Here.
Shaw Walter.
Here.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. We don't have a public hearing listed, we'll move on to a public comment, do we have anybody signed up? We do not, we'll move on to consent agenda, items A and B, item A is the ten twenty twenty twenty-five commission meeting minutes. Item B is appropriation ordinances twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one A and twenty twenty-five dash P twenty-one. Does anybody have any comments, questions, or concerns on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A and B.
Have a motion by Commissioner Redlin.
Second.
Uh, second by Commissioner Myers, Mary, roll please.
Howard.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Redlin.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Shaw Walter.
Yes. Move on to presentations and proclamations, I'll call Chief Earhart to the podium.
Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Sorry, kind of a busy day. Okay. Uh, we have four young men and women.
Did all of us make it?
That I'm very proud of, and I'd like to recognize tonight. Um, on October eleventh, uh, twenty twenty-five, there was an elderly, uh, female that went missing, uh, up in the north part of town. The, um, we had no idea where the female was, um, took off on foot, this was reported, uh, to, the last time the husband saw her was approximately one thirty. And reported it to us probably about an hour later, um, that she could not be found. We searched all over the place, um, I ended up putting a Facebook post out and, um, we had dozens and dozens and dozens of cars, um, looking, out looking for, uh, the lady. Well, just so happens that, um, Hayesley and Hayden.
Correct. You guys heard a voice?
And it came from the, they, they originally thought it was maybe the neighbors or something like that, um, they came back out, um, they called Joseph and Landon, um, and they all went and searched in their backyard, um, they located the elderly lady and she was in between the shed and the fence, and the fence is a concrete fence. Not real sure how she got back in there, but, um, if they would not have went back out there and, and searched, it could have been a very different outcome. A very, very different outcome, so, uh, they somewhat saved this lady's life, um, and tonight we're recognizing them for a very well, job well done and to act on their instincts and go out and look. And, uh, I appreciate you guys, you guys are awesome and I appreciate it. Like I said, we had dozens of cars, um, when they, when she was found, I was in a cornfield, uh, just west of town, um, so we weren't sure where she'd went or, um, anything like that, so. Tonight, Joseph and Hayesley and Hayden and Landon, should come up here, please. Actually, I'll move over here. And I have some, some things in my pocket, I suppose, all I had that night. So this is really cool, because all I had that night was, um, was it Sonic? Sonic drink things, those little tokens? So I just gave them all. That's awesome, so, um, Joseph. Hayesley? Hayden? And so these are, these are called challenge points, you guys know what these are? Basically, it's an accomplishment, um, something that you've done and just shows my gratitude to you, um, I don't just give these out to anybody, but, um, you did a very well, very, very good job and I appreciate it all. So, um, like I said, it could have been a very different outcome, so. Mayor and city manager, you guys, everybody wants to come up and take a picture?
Yeah.
Sure.
Go ahead, Jay.
Yes.
You guys won't front last week's.
Great job, guys.
Uh, to piggyback off of that, I'll give a short update, uh, today we have another missing elderly lady. She was find, found about five miles out in the county, um, she, uh, kind of similar circumstances, uh, she was on her bicycle and she had rode and she was just trying to get back home and she was found in a cornfield. Um, so we have been looking for her since this morning, um, so. Everything's okay? Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, found safe, um, so everything is okay with the, uh, with her. Um, coming from a person that my dad, uh, passed away from Lewy Bodies, uh, was a severe, uh, Alzheimer's, basically. When they lived in the big city, you don't get this type of response that we do in Goodland, um, he went missing several times, you don't, you don't have this. And so the citizens of Goodland and everybody else that, that helps today, Dustin, your crew, thank you, Kenton, uh, yourself and your crew. The EMS fire, everybody that came to the PD and, and we started doing a, basically a grid search, so, um, I thank everybody from the bottom of my heart, we can't do this alone. So, I can't imagine what happens in the big cities, it's probably terrifying, so, well, I know that, actually. But I just wanted to give a quick, a quick update on that, and not to take away from this, because this is very important as well, but, uh, just an update on today's activities, so. We did, uh, call the KHB, uh, plane today, um, and also reached out several places for drones, um, most which were not working, um, or down or whatever, but we did have one come over from Colby. So, um, we were able to get that done, but we need a drone.
Well, thank you Chief Earhart for the update, appreciate the, the good outcome today, and again, on behalf of the city of Goodland, we want to tell you guys how much we appreciate, uh, everything that you did. Like, uh, Chief Earhart said, the police department, there's only, you know, ten or so of those guys, so can't do it unless the community really steps up and helps out, so, again, we appreciate you guys. All right, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions, we'll move on to item A, ordinance eighteen oh four, rezon of six oh three and six oh five Clark Avenue from C one to R two. Zack?
Good evening, everyone.
Evening Zack.
Evening.
Uh, the proposed zoning change has went in front of the planning commissioners, they have recommended to approve this zone change, it will be from a commercial to a multifamily district. It is located on the southeast corner of Sixth and Clark, um, if you're not familiar with that, it, where that is, if you're at Hoover's Lumber and you just go west, you'll go to that next lot and then across the alley in near right here. Um, Josh will pull it up for us. Uh, the reason for going from commercial to multifamily is he proposed to develop two duplexes on that lot. You could get away a single family, but it allows for the future use of more buildings to go on that lot as well. Um, with it being right there in the middle of the residential and the commercial district, it also provides a buffer, so that's normally how things are designed, you go from commercial to multifamily to single family, that's less dense as you get further into the city. Is there any questions? I spewed off a lot.
Does he have a timeframe when he thinks these will be built?
Um, the contractors are going for you guys to approve this and publish it in the paper, so it has to be in the paper for thirty days after you guys acknowledge and approve the rezoning.
Okay.
Um, once that happens, he can break ground, they're just waiting for it, everything to get in motion on our end.
So they're ready?
Yeah, they already have the materials.
Cool.
Well, I think it's certainly a need within the community.
I move to approve ordinance eighteen oh four.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Howard, a second by Commissioner Redlin, Mary, roll please.
Myers.
Yes.
Redlin.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Shaw Walter.
Yes. All right, move on to ordinance, uh, item B, ordinance eighteen oh five, the rezon of sixteen twelve Montana Avenue from R one to C one.
Uh, Mayor, I'm gonna excuse myself from this discussion and the vote, because I am the owner of that property.
Thank you, Commissioner Howard.
This one's easier, if you've got questions, you can just ask him.
Property owners here, all right, Zack, go ahead.
All right, so the property is going to be located where Josh has his mouse right there, it's actually that lot and the lot above it. Um, the request is to go from single family to commercial. We know that Sixteenth and Seventeenth in that area zigzags all the way through there for commercial use since residential use, it is a vacant lot at this point and has been a vacant lot for many years. Um, the proposed change to a commercial use would allow to put a building on it that the owner could use for his business.
I assume it's already been through public hearing, no issues, uh, brought up by neighbors or anything like that?
No, um, there was concerns, I believe, from the church, but they were more so concerned about the rezoning that was two blocks over and the variance that was requested. Uh, the variance was withdrew from this portion of the, the process, so it's strictly just going to be for personal use for the business.
Planning Commission recommends approval, correct?
Yes, sir.
If you may have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance eighteen zero five.
Have a motion by Commissioner Redlin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Myers, Mary, roll please.
Sorry, Archer.
Yes.
Redlin.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Shaw Walter.
Yes. Thank you.
I looked at his seat and it was vacant, it threw me. Sorry about that.
Well, it's not vacant now. All right, we'll move on to item C, resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirty, set public hearing for unfit structure at five twenty West Sixteenth.
I kind of talked about this in my reports last week, to let you know I'd be bringing it to you guys, um, the property shows up under the ownership of Benjamin Welch, um, the person that has been contacting me about it, its name is Omar Alvarez. Um, they have requested to pull permits and stuff on this property to bring it up to date, which I'm all for, except there's a lot of work that needs to be done. This property was brought to the governing body in two thousand and ten in October, um, at that point it was declared an unfit structure, they were given ninety days to fix problems, but after that, kind of lose record of anything that had been done to the property. Um, these are some pictures, the support post for the actual porch isn't even connected to the concrete underneath it, you can just walk up and move it around freely. Uh, just a lot of siding routing, the foundations cracked in multiple places, which you do find that in these older homes, just because of the way they were designed, the concrete gets old and it does crack. Um, that wasn't the big concern of the foundation, on the east side of the house, there's a larger portion, I measured it's about fifteen feet worth of the wall, and there's portions of it that are four to five inches of falling underneath the wall, so that means there's not much of the bottom plate actually sitting on the foundation at this point. Um, once you get to the north side of the house, there was a door on it that was left open in two thousand and ten, Brian James reported it on it, um, a lot of moisture got in there, so it did rot all the wood out, the whole bottom plate on that north side of the building, you can just stick your finger through, so you would have to raise the building up, lower the wall, rebuild the wall, and then put that back up. Um, like our rule says, anything more than fifty percent of the value of what it's at has an automatic demolish, and this property is valued, I think, just over fifteen hundred dollars, so you'd have to make all these repairs for a little over seven hundred bucks, and that's really not feasible. We do need houses in Goodland, but do we really want to Band-Aid these houses together to keep falling apart?
Yeah.
Those are shims in the foundation to keep the, the walls touching it.
I'm assuming this is a vacant property?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
More shims?
I know that this house has changed owners less three or four years, multiple times.
There's no underlayment on the walls, which is a requirement of code now, water barrier, vapor barrier. There's where I was telling you about where all the water soaked in, so, basically, this whole portion right here is completely routed out, and that's what the wall sits and connects to the foundation. Now we're getting into the other portion of the fifteen foot and the, the fall, you can go to the next one, Josh. This kind of gives you a, a sideways angle of it, it's a little hard to, you have to tilt your head like an excited dog, like a confused dog. You can go to the next one. What it looks like to me is that sewer cleanout at one point probably had a leak, sewer main collapsed or something, and then it just let the ground loose underneath it, never got repacked properly, and over time it's just settled and fallen away from the building.
So you said you have been in contact with the owner?
I did send them a list of requirements of what would need to be done to make the house habitable again, and they have not contacted me back, and that was three weeks ago.
Was that the owner or the people trying to?
I don't know who the owner is at this point, it could be like the four oh four Harrison situation where one person has bought the property and never registered it in the deeds office, so through open records, I can't tell.
New windows?
The windows were replaced in twenty thirteen, there was a permit pulled for that. I didn't get any pictures of the inside, it was kind of hard through the windows, because they were all dirty. Um, it has been gutted to the frame, there has been new electrical ran, it looks like some of the floor joists need to be replaced, there's not really flooring in the house right now. Uh, it looks like they might have tried to do some plumbing work at one point in there, but without actually being inside and looking at it, it's hard to, to justify any of that. I could tell some of the electrical wasn't stapled properly, but it's not complete yet, so I can't judge it.
Good. Any questions, comments, or concerns about the request for resolution twenty-five dash thirty?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash thirty to set the public hearing for the unfit structure on five twenty West Sixteenth.
Motion by Commissioner Redlin?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Myers? Mary?
Howard.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Redlin.
Yes.
Archer.
Yes.
Shaw Walter.
Yes. Thank you Zack.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Move on to formal actions for the sewer main rehab project proposal?
Neil's not here right now, um, because he's at Harvest, but, uh, we've discussed this a couple of different times over the last, uh, couple of months. This is a project to fix, um, some, some of the items that they've noticed on the different camera projects. Um, we'll have, on an annual basis, every year, we have company come in and they camera different sewer mains and notice different issues within them. Um, this is a list, a list of, uh, some of the more immediate, um, problems to rectify. Um, and the rehab portion or the column that says rehab in your packets, you know, part of it will say PRP, which is a point repair. And then, uh, some of the others, there's a couple, um, flush pits, there'd be, uh, old style, um, flush pits where they actually add water to the sewer main, um, manhole, and then they were able to flush it out, on, on occasion then, we've been replacing those at various times, and then there's, uh, the CIPP, which is cured in place pipe, which Mayor, I think you saw it the last time they were here, um, it's basically, uh, epoxy that's, uh, in a sock-type formation, they pump it into the pipe, and then they heat it up, and it basically forms a barrier on the pipe, on the in, interior wall of the pipe. And it, uh, helps with different cracks, different holes that are in the pipe, and allows it to flow much more freely, which is what you want to happen with dirty water, you want it to flow. So, there's, uh, I thought, I think nine total, nine or ten total projects listed there, um, the total cost is ninety-seven thousand, which is, we have eighty thousand set aside within the, uh, reserve fund, on the capital improvement reserve fund. Um, but then, uh, next year, we will, as part of the budget, include another forty thousand to add to it, um, so that would end up with a hundred and twenty thousand by the end of twenty-six. Did get, uh, the vendor to report back about when this would occur, it would actually, they're scheduled out until next fall, so, it would actually, the actual work would be done next fall. So, um, but to get on their schedule, we need to contract it now.
Sure.
Or we'll end up into twenty-seven or later. So, staff is recommending if you don't feel comfortable with the, um, ninety-seven thousand dollar priced egg, we could take one project out, and I think I listed it in the, um, CCCF, as far as the last one listed, which is between Eighth and Tenth Street, between Washington and East Ridge Avenue. Um, that's a cured in place project, um, that would be twenty thousand, um, we could take that out. Um, the other recommendation is go ahead and complete these projects, this is, this is not the entire list, this is just, um, priority projects to try to take care of, so. About ten different places in town, taking care of diff, different situations within our sewer mains, so.
So if we sign that contract with them now to get on the schedule, we're not gonna make a payment until next year when they come here, correct?
Until they're done with the work, yes.
Done with the work.
There might be some, you know, to order the actual
Material?
Material. Um, there might be some prepayment for that, but that won't happen until next summer, so, at the earliest.
Ninety-seven thousand dollars seems like a small price to pay to make sure we don't have sewage running or broken sewer lines.
Yeah, or sewer backing up into people's homes, that's the main thing.
Yeah, if we're already doing the project, we might as well do all ten of these, there's no point taking that last one out, in my opinion, we're already gonna be doing it. It's all gonna need done eventually.
Right. Yep.
And we have the money for it right now.
Hey, can we get more expensive?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the sewer main rehab project proposal for ninety-seven thousand dollars.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Redlin, uh, second by Commissioner Howard, Mary, roll please.
Archer.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Redlin.
Yes.
Howard.
Yes.
Shaw Walter.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, move on to discussion items, item A, joint county city commission meeting on November seventeenth before regular city commission meeting.
You had asked
Pretty much it, right?
That's what it is, yes. You had asked, we had discussed it at the last meeting, and you had asked, uh, staff to ask, uh, the counties what would be a good date to have the meeting, and they suggested just have it before a regular meeting on November seventeenth. They'll make that work for the three county commissioners, and we can hold it here, reset the room, so everybody's on the same level, so we don't have one set of folks looking down on another set of folks, everybody at the same level, and then once that meeting is concluded, reset for the regular meeting.
Sounds good.
What time would that be then?
It'll be at five o'clock.
Oh, at five o'clock, okay.
Is there any other additional topics that city commissioners would like to see on?
That's all that I need to talk about?
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay. We will set it up.
All right. Thank you very much. Move on to reports to start with. Uh Ken, City Manager?
Well, including your package, the manager memo. Uh the one item is uh our deputy city clerk, Shawna Johnson, did complete um the certified municipal clerk certification. Uh the requirements that
Good job, Shawna.
Shawna is here tonight. Shawna, could you come up just for a second and tell us what? Just describe what you had to go through in order to get that certification.
No more than thirty minutes, please, though. No more than thirty minutes.
Keep it short.
So this was um a four-year course. It required three days in person, once a year, and then there was classwork on top before we went to each class. So um it's just learning parts of city clerk and city ordinances and resol- just learning how to do all the things that may come on my desk in the future.
That will.
But learned a lot and um really got to know a lot of the clerks in the surrounding cities, so created some communication that was really nice.
We appreciate you taking on that extra education and making sure that uh you're up to date on everything and get that done, so thank you.
Thank you.
Who'd ask uh building officials, Zach Hilderman, to come back up and talk regarding the schedule?
The property owner did come in the Friday after our meeting, and then also the Monday. That way they had the weekend to look over the the choices I gave them. Um I gave them two options. One was removing the back half, the addition. That way they didn't have to worry about anything regarding that. It was just making sure the siding and paint was done and the windows were done on the house. They opted to fix the addition onto the house. So they will have sixty days to get that portion of it done, and then they have sixty days to get the next portion of it done. And then the final sixty days is basically the the buttoning up touches of paint, all the other weatherproofing of weather resistant type of coverings.
Okay.
So a hundred and eighty days total. Once again, if the deadlines aren't met, then we will bring it back to you and go for the demolition, so. She is aware of that, and it has been agreed upon, so that's all I have.
That was good. Thank you.
Thanks, Zach.
Zach, before you leave, did you wanna say anything regarding the house on Cherry Street?
Did we not talk about this last meeting? Thirteen nineteen Cherry?
Thirteen nineteen Cherry.
We talked about it, Cherry?
We didn't. Never mind.
We we were dealing with this property for a while. Um we did declare it unfit, I believe, at the beginning of twenty twenty-four.
This is the one whose property owner was deceased?
Yeah, we did talk, talk, sorry.
We did talk about it.
Okay. So.
We're up to it.
Never mind. We're good.
That'll be occurring all day.
Zach.
One other thing I wanted to mention uh tonight is uh we did have a code issue and ordinance discussed um regarding the RV parks and residential. Um did want to let know that uh just so we don't have a bunch of different property owners come regarding it, that uh right now, while we're discussing the ordinance, we have not taken action regarding the current situation at that property. Because technically, the person is violating the ordinance regarding RV parks in residential areas. So we have not pursued it as yet, but just wanna let know that we are working on an ordinance that is being presented to the planning commission for their consideration. That doesn't mean it will make it to the end. And we have just delayed at this point. Um we do know that it is currently in violation of the code. Um and that doesn't mean that it should remain just because it's there. So I did wanna mention it in the meeting because I don't think it was made clear at the original meeting when this issue got kicked off, so.
Well, and I I appreciate you bringing that up, Ken. I think that, you know, certainly in this case, that's happening because that's at our our direction. The city commission has asked that, you know, we don't enforce that ordinance, although I would say that in the future, I don't necessarily like how that feels because I think that gives, you know, some people the idea that we can tell people what ordinances to respect and not to respect, and it needs to go all the way through the process, and people need to follow the ordinances, and then when they are passed or it's not passed, then you know, that's that's how the system works, so I don't I don't necessarily wanna get caught in this kinda conundrum where we do this again. I think we need to follow the ordinances as written. Um so, yeah, there's, I don't necessarily like how how we went about it, but I appreciate Zach working uh with us and not uh not acting on that right now, but I certainly don't wanna get in the habit of doing that. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts or feelings on that, but that certainly puts our code enforcement officers and police officers and people like that in a tough position when we say, well, it is the ordinance, but don't enforce it, so we shouldn't, we should, we as a a governing body should not probably get in the habit of that, but.
And that's all I have for tonight at this stop.
Okay. Move on to commissioner reports. Start uh on my right with Commissioner Artser.
Nothing to report.
Mr. Myers?
Uh yeah, I just wanna thank you guys again for just paying attention and keeping your ears open and helping that lady out. Um I imagine her spouse is very happy that you guys actually stepped up to the plate. Um I also wanted to thank, I believe it's the Sheriff's Department, whoever else was involved in the trunk retreat. Uh very well attended event. Uh it was great, and um from what I could tell, it went smoothly. It was a lot of fun, so.
Commissioner Howard?
Uh just got one thing. The the lights over the around the walking trail look great, but if you live over there, it's like daylight at eleven thirty at night.
Over there.
I I think we should put a timer on the lights. If the park closes at eleven, and they should go off at eleven. If they come, if we open the park, it'll five in the morning. That's when the lights need to come back on. Drive by, it's bright.
There are timers coming for the lights.
Are they?
And I was advised by Andrew with E B H that he had shut down the lights, but they may have
They're back on.
Back on now. The kids like to see, the college kids like to see their work and
You're trying to say you haven't got much sleep lately?
I'm blaming that room room darkening blinds, and it it's 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 still lighting.
Get that timer on order. Thank you, Commissioner Howard. Did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Uh Commissioner Redlin?
Yep. I also wanted to say thank you to kids that uh helped find the lady, and also thank you to the parents. You guys raised some good kids, so thank you for that. Also wanna say the, on the flip side, the lights are really good, and that uh, you know, that was a, something my wife, she walks that trail every single day, every morning, and she is very thankful for the lights. It makes her feel a little more secure and safe. And uh, yeah, so thank you for, the trail committee, I believe, is a lot to thank for that as well. Is that true?
Yeah.
Um and then uh go vote tomorrow. We got we got voting, so let's get out and vote and, yeah, let's show up. That's all.
Perfect, thank you. For the mayor's report, I would just add that I cannot see the lights from my house. I don't have anything to report. Thank you. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So moved.
So moved.
I didn't actually get a motion there. I said I would entertain a motion to
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Redlin, second by Commissioner Artser. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.